In the order, I'm showing five thirty six. May I have a roll call, please, Kayla?
Maricopa.
Here.
Mr. Mock.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Westbrooks.
Here.
Mr. Darrow is absent.
Okay, and tonight is a special meeting. Tonight, we are going over the proposed Reek Reynolds Ranch-style homes at South Park Drive, Girl Scout Way, or whatever you want to call that road, because sometimes it's contentious. So, at any rate, John, why don't you come up here? And we'll listen to some, are you in good voice tonight?
Try.
We're gonna find out, huh?
Art with Brian.
Please.
The applicant is proposing to construct eighty attached single-family rental units at the end of Girl Scout Way. The property is owned R two residential district. Please note, this property was rezoned by the Summit County Court of Common Pleas as part of an agreed-upon judgment entry. I've reviewed the following information in connection with this request: one, revised site plan dated five six thirteen; two, a landscape plan dated three twenty eight thirteen; and three architectural plans dated five one thirteen. Based on my review of these plans, I offer the planning commission with the following comments for their consideration. Number one, section eleven sixty-three oh four C eight requires the side and rear lap line of a multiple family dwelling be screened to a minimum height of six feet to any adjacent non-residential zoning district. It does not appear that this requirement is being met for units abutting commercially zoned land to the north. Unit C in building L in the back of building A are locations that require the additional screening. Number two, the proposed units are architecturally very similar, and the only distinguishable difference between the units is the use of some brick on the front facade and a dormer on three of the elevations. The city architect should confirm if these minor differences are enough to avoid the look-alike requirement in the code. Number three, as outlined in my previous report for this proposal, I am concerned with the amount of traffic that will be generated by these two developments. I suggested coordinated second means of ingress egress between this development and the one to the north. Revised plan now, I'm sorry, the revised plans now illustrate a stub road ending at the north property line of a subject property as a future access road into the development proposed to the north and presumably over Indian Creek and out to South Bedford. The proposed sub-connection between this development and the one to the north is located on the curb in the road and adjacent the entrance to the trash compactor and the driveway to a unit in building L. My concern is there's a lot of traffic in one geographically small location, and the site distances may be impeded for traffic traveling north along the main road toward the cul-de-sac. This roadway connection relative to its location along the main road and proximity to the trash compactor drive and the driveway from the unit in building L should be examined by the city's traffic engineering consultant to confirm this configuration is acceptable or if modifications are needed. The plans are substantially complete to receive final approval from planning commission. The landscaping item I noted is fairly minor and can be easily addressed by the applicant's landscape architect. My only significant concern relates to the second ingress egress point to South Bedford. As stated, the city's traffic engineer should closely examine this area to confirm if the configuration is acceptable or if modifications are needed.
Very good. Can you please move on to next comments, Kayla?
Yes. These are from Nick. I have reviewed the submitted engineering plan for the proposed Reynolds-style ranch homes at South Park Drive and offer the following title sheet. Consider the addition of under drains at the back of curb on each side of the pavement typical section. Provide cleanouts access points for future maintenance of under drain and pavement center line. External approvals required by Cleveland Water Department Summit County DOES for sanitary summit soil and water and Ohio EPA NOI. Overall site plan, consider the addition of sidewalk for pedestrian traffic movement. A traffic control plan will be required for signing and striping purposes. Street lighting plan will be required with photometric study. Traffic study is currently being conducted. Study area will include the intersections of Girl Scout Way and South Bedford and South Bedford and State Route eighty-two. Study will include signal warrant analysis and turn lane analysis. Utility plan, how is stormwater runoff from rooftops being handled? Show storm lateral connections from buildings to storm sewer or direct discharge to stormwater manager pond. No splash blocks. Stormwater management report will be required. Use LSM backfill around all catch basins located within the pavement section. LTMA and easements will be required for all stormwater management basins. As-built will be required prior to execution of LTMA by city. Fire department approval will be required for number and location of proposed fire hydrants. Mass grading plan, no comments. Stormwater pollution prevention plan. Plan sheet, plans shall meet codified ordinance nine twenty-three requirements for construction and post-construction stormwater volume and quality. Ohio EPA NOI will be required. SSWCD plan approval will be required. Stormwater pollution prevention plan details, no comments. Engineering approval is recommended with the understanding that all issues will be handled administratively with the applicant prior to issuance of any permits. I am available for further discussion at the planning commission's request.
Dennis, it's seven. Up to you, Phil. Can we have your report, please, so Kayla gets a break?
Sure. The elevations and materials of proposed structures fall within the guidelines of the town center standards. Since look-alike provisions of section thirteen forty-one oh two three only apply to single-family homes, we developed this offering for elevation with varying materials and material locations to help avoid repetition, the same look for building to building. In my opinion, the stone stack over the double windows on the street view and end elevation should be limited and split shakes used for the entire gate. The stone used on the front elevations should be wrapped twenty-four inches around corners as has been required by other new homes for the past fifteen to twenty years. Please note, the garages must be four hundred square feet minimum. I did not see the mention for the garage width. The other thing we've been asking of others is also five-inch corner trim and six to eight-inch crease for its front mirror and on the eaves.
That's where there's not stone treatments in the corner? For the five-inch corner trim, that's where there's not stone treatment in the corner?
Well, on top of the corner, yeah, right, right, yeah.
All right, John?
This development will need reviewed against the current two thousand eleven fire code. Couple of items that may be fire protection, water supply. It's only a single line going in there. It's not looped, so we'll need fire flows to determine if that eight-inch line is going to be adequate based on the fire load and apparatus access roads. You know, those requirements in five oh three, and the other one is five oh seven. Do you plan on sprinkling those?
We do not.
Okay.
Solid construction is, I guess it's townhome construction on the residential side.
Well, sprinklers buy you a whole lot of exceptions.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
You could probably get away with an eight-inch line and a single ray and based on that, they were sprinkled.
We'll run those flows for sure.
All right, thank you for your input. Questions, comments from the commission?
How do you plan to have this stormwater runoff?
The stormwater runoff is shown in a couple of different ways. Relative to the roof, that'll be piped. We pipe into the catch basins and then into the basins. We won't be using splash locks. Quite frankly, splash lock would come across.
I have a question regarding the way this is laid out. I was in Hudson, and I checked him out with one of our local builders and gave him the okay. I had a head shake, yes, it's a good unit. However, the homes in Hudson had brick all the way around. My recollection.
I honestly don't.
It could be that I see there's brick on an end view.
Yeah.
Not on every end, but to my recollection, they had stone all the way around them. And they also, every, on both sides of the streets, they had sidewalks. And we don't have any sidewalks in this. And I still think you're gonna have eighty units there. And if you have any kids or anything, well, the average age, I know it's fifty-two, but could be grandkids being babysitting. And they want to walk. I'm just surprised why this one didn't have sidewalks or the stone all the way around. Those are my concerns. I'm not as technical as everybody else.
Sure, and I don't recall the rear elevation that we had on here. I thought we had a band of stones, a bottoming elevation too. I'd be willing to submit to that, for sure.
Well, that's good, because then the house is finished all the way around.
Yeah, you're right, it doesn't. Yeah, we would be willing to do the same, you know, the same water table treatment on the rear of those units.
That's fantastic.
That's not wrong. And then relative to the sidewalks, I think we talked the last time, and actually, I may have missed, but I think we talked about sidewalks on one side and the interior.
I'd really like to see sidewalks in both sides, just aesthetically and everything else.
Well, it was that way in Hudson, as I remember, okay? Now, that stipulation always has to be in there, "as I remember," okay? But my recollection is Hudson had sidewalks and they had bricks, and that was my concern.
Sure, and I know I can do the stone for sure. I can tell you, give you that commitment tonight, if it was part of the approval, I don't have a problem with that. Sidewalks on both sides. I could do that. What I would ask is that, you know, maybe something we can work out with, you know, the city engineer relative to, like, when we come down these stub streets and there's nothing on the other side of the street, maybe we don't have it on both sides of the street.
Absolutely. That's only fair.
Where it's practical and frankly safe, I probably wouldn't want to have one on this side where that basin is either. So I think maybe it's something we can work out with Nick.
Well, there's, you know, the basin, is that going to be full of water or is it just a retention basin?
This'll have water and it'll be a water feature. So when you get up to the top and you're in the roundabout, you'll be able to see a water feature there. And then it'll have bollards, not your standard orange bollards, but, you know, it'll have a vertical, probably six-by-six type posts along here to keep traffic out of that. But open, so you can still see through it.
Well, we have a couple of developments in town recently that are shown lines, because you can actually walk past the water.
And actually, as an alternate to sidewalks, that was something that we have talked about internally, is my thought for the center of this is going to be fairly natural. We could do an alternate walking path through the middle of this as opposed to sidewalks on both sides. I'd like to get some one-way or.
I would really like to see sidewalks, because if you have, if somebody's gonna, say, have a party or a bunch of cars or they have to go to your remote parking, they need a way to get there without walking in the street.
Sure. And generally, our experience has been on one side of the street still does work, people will cross the street and walk on the sidewalk. But if it's two sides we want, I don't have a problem doing that. The only I would ask is if we want to do side, do some type of path in the middle here in this open space, then maybe we do it on one side on the outside and then do a central kind of path in the middle that would get access to.
I'd like to see the detail before I pass on. I mean, right here, I think along this, I'd like to see sidewalks on both sides of this. Where you come down to the mailbox, drop the sidewalk in here. Okay. I guess over here, you need to pick it up here and you don't really need it going around.
Actually, I'd keep it past the mailbox, because people are already walking to the mailbox. That would be my, okay.
I would agree with that.
Well, Ed and I are pretty strong on saying sidewalks, all right? But it all depends on if you said you would come back. Well, your time schedule is determined by you. You would have to come back, because it won't be passed tonight unless you have sidewalks on both sides.
Well, I guess I'm willing to submit sidewalks on both sides. Where I have, I guess, a little bit of an issue is the internal sidewalks and sidewalks on both sides. And it really gets to a redundancy issue for getting people in the development, out of the development.
Do you really want to?
If I could just do it.
Encouraging, you know, there's nice to walk behind a lake, but you're right. I mean, somebody's windows are right there.
I agree. Well, that's why I would prefer to do one or the other.
Well, then do the sidewalk.
That's fine. I can do sidewalks on both sides. That's not a problem. I was just responding to your comment about being able to get around the water.
Well, right here, getting your sidewalk goes past the water.
We're gonna, yeah, I can look at what mine's here. I'll submit to doing that. It's probably some alternate design in terms of bollards or guard rail there, so that you can still get that view of the water. I mean, that view of the water is important, I mean, for a car as well as for people.
You got it.
So we'll have to, we'll have to figure out how that works. Okay.
I think the bollards is not as good as the sidewalks. It might be good for safety. But in a community like that, I don't see anybody driving at such excessive speeds that they would end up in that lake.
Certainly hope not.
But on the other hand, there shouldn't be people. There shouldn't be people on the road.
Right.
So that was my concerns, John. Anybody else? Kevin, you are the traffic man. Do you have concerns with traffic?
I'm glad you're doing a traffic study. That's good. I was just saying, maybe, you know, Brian's a big hugger of three there, you know, pass it on the.
I think really what he gets to is his concern, I think, is really the drive on L, I'll call it, building, the last unit on L. Is that drive comes out of the intersection? I can do a side engine garage on that and bring that access point off of the stub that goes north. And I think if I read his note right, I think that alleviates his concern. Now, we're still doing the traffic study. But I think his concern is that drive entering the middle of that intersection. So if I do a side engine garage on that, I should be okay.
And what's the plan for that stub?
Well, yeah, there's a proposed assisted living at here.
It's five oh three.
It's here, so.
Well, I know, I see that, but what I'm looking at is the road coming to the cul-de-sac is only a single road. Which means that whole area is just single access.
Well, that's what this is to provide for the access through the assisted living, you know, at the time that's built, which is supposed to be in the next six months. I mean, this could take us a while to build these two. You know, it's not going to all come out of the ground in a day. As part of the agreement, we have a stormwater basin on the east side of the site, which largely, but based on the existing grade, it doesn't serve our site. So they're putting their stormwater over at HSP, and we'll have a second means of egress out to South Bedford Road through there. And in doing all of that, our traffic report will actually be a joint traffic report. So when I submit it, it will take into account their use relative to the full build-out of this.
Well, let's just say that doesn't get built. Who's going to extend that road?
Well, I think, and certainly the fire chief can speak to this too, potentially. You know, the fire code with fire adverse roads has two sections. One is for single-family and one is for multifamily. In a multifamily environment, which I believe the code recognizes this as, it gives the fire chief the ability to approve up to a hundred units on a single access point. Single-family, I believe it's only thirty-two. It comes from appendix of D, if you're looking at it up there. We are underneath the, I mean, we're twenty percent underneath the hundred unit point. Obviously, I think that it's important to have a secondary access. I agree a hundred percent with that. But in the interim, I think that, you know, we do have eighty units on the one access, which shouldn't leave the code.
That's why I asked.
It's not going to do anybody any good if there's some reason that road's blocked and they need to get down. That's my problem with it. You block the main road coming in up of South Bedford right now, okay, and you lose one hundred percent access to your facility.
Just an observation. That, I mean, that would be an observation for a large number of single-family subdivision two throughout northeastern Ohio. I mean, obviously, you know, there's not walls on either side of the right of way either. If the fire department had to get there, absent a flood, you know, if they could get their trucks to where they're going to get their trucks to where they have to go, would be, I guess, my observation to that.
I understand that they will, but I mean, I just think, you know, I think you're splitting hairs between eighty and a hundred.
I understand what the code says. The code doesn't say you have to do it, okay? I don't have another option, quite frankly, besides this. Crossing Indian Creek in this location, you know, the best option's a coordinated access here. Crossing Indian Creek, although potential, you know, there's a potential to do that. There's a flood plain there. It's a perennial stream. That's a major cycling strength. I think that when you try to balance, and that's what we all try to do, we try to balance the ecological impacts, the development impacts, everything. This coordinated access here from a traffic standpoint, access management to Bedford Road, I think this coordinated access is the best way to go from a long-term.
I have no problem with that, providing everything else goes ahead.
Sure.
Okay. My question is more on what if, if it doesn't.
Well, it's a good sign that at least they're showing a stub there, you know? I mean, rather than have nothing, there's some core thought that possibly in the future. I think as the development develops, you're going to find out exactly, will that be needed immediately? When you first start, you're only going to have a few houses built. Do you wait till they're all done before you open?
No, we open on a building-to-building basis.
All right, so that'll gradually increase, so there'll be good time. You see what I'm getting at, Ed? Yes. This is going to be that, this is going to be that new assisted.
And we don't know what'll happen on the west side of Girl Scout Way either, and whether that'll interchange with what's happening with the Girl Scout office building. You know, that could potentially in the next year, two years, who knows, provide alternate access down the side of this road too. I mean, there's what-if scenario, and we all have to balance what-if scenarios. You know, what if this was fully engulfed and this was blocked, you know, at a certain point, I don't know. There's a hundred what-if situations that could happen in any given.
I said, the fire department has access to the assisted living or whatever next to city hall?
Here. Over there.
Right?
Right there.
It's not used as a road or anything, or bypass or anything like that?
It's a hardened, yeah, it's a hardened area where they can go across if they need to.
So whatever comes in here or not can be used, you know, off of here or if it's blocked.
The anticipation is that there's some benefit to them having this too. Should there be something, you know, at their entrance here or their, you know? This just provides a third access for their development too. I mean, it helps the whole thing to work together. And frankly, it helps, well, I think the traffic's going to show that. It'll help the operation of this intersection, because a certain number of our people who are going south on Bedford Road will probably exit out. You know, once they move here and they learn how it works, they're going to exit out here as opposed to getting up in this main intersection. So from a traffic standpoint, it helps with that too. I think interconnections, whenever we can do them, are wise. You just have to be careful with how you're connecting through sites and site management. There's nothing to the south that we can connect to here and then get through seventy-one on the other side.
My concern on that lateral isn't for daily traffic.
Okay.
I think daily traffic, I think it probably began by the other road. You know, you got eighty units at maximum, you're going to have a hundred and sixty cars.
And certainly fewer than single-family homes in that same area.
Yeah.
One exception to two ways, Ed, is sprinkled.
He sells sprinklers.
He sells sprinklers.
Every fire chief I know sells sprinklers. I don't know who didn't.
And smoke detectors.
Smoke detectors, I will say, we'll have throughout the units.
Anybody else? Any other questions, Kevin? Bill?
Do you have a trash compactor?
Yes, it's an enclosed trash compactor. It's all one seal. We do that to control odors and varmints.
So you're going to list those as multiple-family residential developments versus one or two-family residential developments?
Well, they're, I think they're handled as townhomes under the residential code. Just recently, and I can forward it to you, I had a community who applied to the international code council to get a determination on whether or not these were one or two-family or multifamily relative to the access. And the ICC had said they felt it was multifamily relative to the access.
My interpretation is they're multifamily, and you're allowed a hundred unit.
Yeah, so I think that's consistent.
I know there was some concern expressed at the last meeting about the schools and the traffic from the schools and so forth. And I went down there and I looked, and yeah, too dirty, that could be a problem. But there's also housing developments, buried streets that are back in there. And there's people that live on those streets and they get in and out even though the schools are there. So the schools will always be a concern, because you've got a lot of kids who are driving today. We're going to put a sidewalk in, so maybe they'll start walking. Wouldn't that be good?
Couple of them. And I did, I did request for the, and I believe they're doing the counts right now. I did request that our counts be done during the school year, because that's your largest generator on that street is school traffic.
Unlikely, yes.
I did want to make sure that those.
You've got your school days and then you have events.
No, I am counting on Monday, right? I can count this minute.
Yeah, then you have events in the evening, sometimes.
Sure.
Football games, whatever, basketball games, whatever. So, like I say, I was concerned with that, but then I'm noticing, well, there are housing developments there, people that are living there, and they seem to have got themselves a system so that they're not in conflict with the traffic.
I think largely, the people who are going to live in these units, because of, well, the two demographics we go after. One, if they're retired, they're going to learn not to turn left out of here at two o'clock in the afternoon. They have other times throughout the day they can run errands. They tend to run the errands when it's your traffic. Then we have the younger professionals, twenty-five to thirty-something, who frankly will be at work at that time. And there are some in that older demographic who do work, but again, they are usually leaving at two-thirty in the afternoon.
Well, we needed to talk about it.
Sure, absolutely.
And we did that. Any other questions, comments? Now, we have some conditional things. We have conditional things about the rock around the buildings, the sidewalks. So is there anything else we have to be concerned with conditionally? I mean, is the traffic study going to stop it?
As long as they agree with whatever, you know, if there's recommendations in their report and all.
So in other words, we ought to include that as part of this, okay? So that, so we have the traffic study, we have sidewalks on both sides, we have bricks around, and the traffic study will cover that road. Anything else?
You have no problem with using the LSM backfill?
I guess I'd like the ability to discuss that with the engineer and come up with a solution that works. I was, my engineer's sitting here with me. He's not my design engineer, my construction engineer. And frankly, I don't know the pluses or minuses of using the LSM surrounding it. Typically, we use, you know, premium rock backfill around the structures. Long term, I would say I probably have a little bit of a maintenance concern if it's encapsulated in LSM and the ability to get in there and replace a structure doing as little damage to the roadway as possible. Stone's easier to dig out.
If you end up with a catch basin that's sink, they start to break up and crack with the LSM.
Let me throw you some of that. That's exactly what Eric and I were talking about, you know, before the meeting, was that there's probably some mitigating. Frankly, I guess I don't know enough to be able to say that I'm willing to commit to it, but if it's something that I could discuss with the engineer, I'm open to discussing it with them. I just don't know enough, quite frankly, because we've never had to put LSM around the structures. I mean, these will be private streets and we own the maintenance of them, so for us, whatever makes it less maintenance is good for us. But I just can't respond to that. If I could work that out with the engineer, I'd appreciate it.
Almost every catch basin we have in the city on dedicated streets has to be rebuilt with the first ten years.
Well, and there's considerable discussion back and forth for us on that too. A lot of it, we use the same site contractor on almost every site we do in this area. And the reason is because we know we can trust him with the way he puts the stuff in. We don't have problems.
A lot of it is compaction.
That's exactly. And actually, with that contractor, a lot of communities, and it's something that, I'm not asking for it now, we've talked to the engineer, if he's open to it, but we actually use roller compacted backfill a lot of the trenches, and he does it with such, so carefully that we actually have better success than putting premium in our trenches. Now, around the structures is a different story. You can't, it's very hard to do that, but that's why we use that contractor. Because we know we can trust the work he does. He's always done a good job for us, so I'm open to discussing it. It's different than the way we normally do things. The other comment I would have is relative to under drain at the back of curb. We do have under drain underneath the center section of the V. We do have underdrain underneath the center section of the V. I guess I don't see why underdraining, I mean, if we provide cleanouts at the center, which is the lowest point, the water will, will go down to the lowest point of rain. I don't know that I understand the logic behind clean underneath the curbs as well, where the curb is already in the concrete section.
Well, we're gonna be inspecting this as this develops. And should that be listed as a concern in the conditions that we're discussing tonight or?
The underdrained curb?
Yeah.
I think in a few discussions I had with Nick about it, he was concerned about catching the water before it got down underneath the pavement and getting all the way to the drain. That was his concern.
Well, the road construction, of course, is critical. I agree with that. But that's the way a lot of our streets are made, or some streets are made. Shepherd Hills was that one.
Another thing we've responded to, if you look at what the state of Ohio is doing now, and all of, anything they're putting in, they're putting miles and miles and miles. The plastic pipe in just to get the water out of there because that's their biggest.
Well, and that's frankly, by way, provided in the center of the road, you know, in a regular crown section, you know, the lowest part is underneath the curb, which is why it goes underneath that curb. The curb itself is the strongest part of the road though. So, you know, having it underneath the curb is, there's much less of an issue. Now, it does go underneath the road and has to fall underneath there, but the subgrade is also required to be graded the same gradient as the pavement. So, the water should still move through that. And I guess I'm open to discussing it.
Well, you know.
If it's an absolute requirement.
I'll tell you what, John. That's your road.
That's right.
So, if something happens to that road.
It's my, it's my problem.
It's your problem.
No, no, the next, next reason. Now, if you, if you have a good argument, can convince me.
As long as, as long as the subbase is put in properly and used the right material, I don't know about 304, but use the right material, it compacts well. You'll get, you'll get drainage off the side of the road into your, you know, into your basin. What's the, what's around this?
I don't know the, it's rock. I don't know the exact gradient, but it's rock. I think maybe 57s. Yeah, it's 57s.
In so many different ways, what you're seeing is a reflection of what's happened to developments in this community. Catch basins collapsing. We must have fixed 100 or more already. Subsections of roads deteriorating, or we have to redo the road surface. But all of this stuff is your problem.
Absolutely. And we have, you know, we're currently, we currently own 3,000 units. What we have, what we've proposed, and it comes to the person who constructs it too. I put a lot on our contractors. You know, we actually moved away from asphalt because we had, we had maintenance issues with asphalt. A lot of people don't like concrete, but we like the maintainability of concrete long-term. We have 3,000 units and this is the system that we've used that has worked very well for us over the last two years.
Well, this is a unique situation because it will never be sold to anybody, as far as I know.
It will become your responsibility.
So, it'll be your responsibility for a term, not ours.
Absolutely.
Just so we're clear on that.
I expect nothing less. We still own the very first project we ever built. I mean, we, we, we're in this for the long term. We aren't merchant builders. We don't build and sell.
All right, so some of those issues with engineering and so forth, to me, it's like their engineers are building it well knowing that this.
I think you need to work it out with their engineer.
Yeah, that's all. I don't have a problem doing that.
Yeah, good luck there.
Yeah.
All right, so you're gonna do that. Anything else on the conditional list?
The only thing I would ask is relative to stone, if we could specify similar to the side of the building? So that, you know, the stone, similar to the side, just so we're clear, it's not gonna be all the way up to the eaves.
No, no. It was the ledge all the way around.
Perfect.
My impression, looking at the elevations, there's an awful lot of sand just everything. Is there any?
Well, yeah, I guess we'll talk about that. So, I'm talking the elevations, and it doesn't show revolting black and white drawing. But I did bring samples to show you what, what kind of looks do. Wow.
Watch that thing, I'll be sure. Oh, no, that's mine.
That's mine. So, it's got the stone, the stone's got natural variations. And what we do with the stone is on the front elevations, the ones that don't have stone, we actually use a number of different colors that, that kinda complement with the stone. So that as you drive down the street and you see each garage grouping, each garage grouping will have a different color vinyl on it. So, when you drive down the street, it starts to break up that look and give the front of those garages much more of an individual appearance. And actually, our residents really like it because they say, well, I'm, I'm in the red unit. Or I'm in, you know.
Well, that's important.
The green unit, you know.
3 o'clock in the morning when you're a little.
You know, if you're going to work.
Yeah. You don't wanna visit your lady friend.
No. Well, I think you're, you got pretty much answered. Of all the questions that I'm aware of, is there anything else, Kevin?
No.
When were you gonna do your fire cloak or fire load for?
I don't have it scheduled yet. I, I'm only with you.
Well, I mean, I don't know if you were gonna do that as part of your.
As our engineer do, yeah. I'll get the guys out there as soon as possible to get it done, but I imagine they have to schedule with Cleveland Water and probably let you know what you might ask. Cleveland Water owns the system, so.
Right. But that'd be based against one structure for units for your fire load?
Yes.
Well, there were a lot of important questions, and I think we've answered them all. Unless, everybody search your mind one more time. And then, Kayla, do we have the conditions listed, or do we need to reiterate?
Reiterate please. I got traffic study and sidewalks on both sides.
And a ramp around shelf, stone effect.
Okay.
Sidewalk.
Got it.
Both sides.
Got it.
She got that.
Side entering building out.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
That screening that Brian talked about, do you guys wanna talk about that?
I guess I need to.
Unless you wanna bring it back for that, unless they're prepared. I mean, as far as landscaping.
I don't, I don't have a.
You wanna treat it separately?
Well, you know what? Maybe we should because if we had drawings of what was gonna go up next to it, then we'd know what we're really shooting for. I mean, the idea is so we don't have to look out into somebody's shirt, parking lot, or dumpster, or something like that. I mean, that's a whole other.
And actually, what, you know, on the landscaping plan, we were really pretty minimal in that area. And the reason for that, when we met with Dennis, I don't know if I look right here, met with Dennis, the discussion we had between the two of us was that it probably made sense for me to take part of their buffering that they need onto my site as well. Because I wanna make sure that all gets established and gets mature. I just didn't have their information and time to be able to provide that. Look, I don't want my people to see that anymore.
How about if you come back for that?
Yeah. You have a problem on that?
Yeah.
That way, as things develop, we'll still have some, some idea. Is it all new there?
Well, it might, yeah. I wanna buffer it as best as I can, probably pines and some deciduous, I don't want it to be just a pine row, but, yeah, I want it to be pretty well screened. They're gonna have a three-story building, I'm building ranch style.
You can.
Inherently, there's.
You can't hide their building from them.
No, but inherently, there's a, there's a difference in intensity there, and I wanna be able to buffer that, so. And then I'm building A, I don't, I don't have a problem. I can bring that back too. We kind of stayed minimal on that because there is existing drainage ditch back here, and we felt there was a lot of kinda area in through here, but we can, we can amp that up. That's not, that's not too much of an issue.
So, we are conditional and we will be reassessing landscaping at a different, as the project goes forward.
We could still move forward with engineering at that point, as long as we come back, I guess, prior to construction and make sure everything's approved in landscaping, is that?
I don't even know if you have to come back. I mean, the lands, yeah, landscaping, it's when everything is done, so.
Okay.
We just wanna make sure as this all develops, how it's gonna look.
Sure.
How it's gonna look to adjacent streets, how it's gonna look to South Bedford, how it's gonna look to 82.
Right. Are there any issues to the property to the south, only because the residents of those streets have been somewhat vocal on, we don't want anything built thick?
Absolutely. The residents of those streets actually denied it in a referendum in 2006. But then the owner took us to court, and there was a ruling from the court that overturned, and it says that it held the property cannot be developed as R1 district because of surrounding commercial zoning, the I-271 freeway, the existence of power lines, railroad lines. So, there's some drawback to that, as he's explaining here when he's bringing this to.
I think the impact's gonna be minimal.
But.
I'd say it ain't gonna only get there.
It was court order to go to R2, and this is acceptable in R2. Will the residents there complain? Absolutely. All right? But it's just like any other time, that anything's built in anybody's backyard, you don't want it. So, they have the right to do this. The seller has the right to make profit off and sell this land zone. So, there's little the city can do further. And Joe's last letter on this was January 16th of this year. So, I don't know if you want a copy of that.
I don't have a copy of that, actually.
Why?
Take that one.
Great, thank you. Who's gonna, who's gonna patch it? Typically, we use patch dough. I, we have a tremendous amount of respect and trust in them. The only reason I would see that we are using it is capacity, because I need, but, yeah. We haven't did it yet. But he's done the vast majority of everything he's done in the previous.
Any other comments, questions, provisions? Kayla's got them all.
I have traffic study, walks on both sides, wraparound stone effect, side entry of building C, L Unit C, and return to the landscape plan.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve of the conditions listed. Just Kayla just read.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Post. Good luck, John.
Thank you, Mayor.
Keep in touch with me.
Absolutely.
I don't know how you're doing.
We're in against you.
No, I appreciate that.